Questions here that we will, we're going to start asking. And the first one, Senator Favola is for you. Um, welcome. You get to go first. Um, so one of the things that you had mentioned in your introduction is some of the criminal justice reform stuff that has been done down in Richmond. Could you provide us with some details on that?
Oh, yes, sure. Absolutely. The Senate decided to do an omnibus bill and the House did 14 separate bills. But they do track, the bills do track, and I'm very happy to say that. In addition to some of the issues I mentioned earlier, for example, this bill would ban sex with individuals who've been arrested by law enforcement. Almost every other state in the Union has that on the books. Virginia does not.
Unbelievable that we have to have a law on the books for that, but thank you.
Well, yeah, we try, you know, it's very obvious. Somebody who's in custody cannot consent. We do have the prohibition on the no-knock warrants. We have a prohibition on hiring officers who have resigned from the use of force investigations. And we're setting up a database to ensure that bad cops don't get passed along through the revolving door to other jurisdictions. We are requiring warning shots before shots are fired, requiring law enforcement to exhaust all other means before shooting. We're really trying to change this sort of almost militaristic approach to policing to an approach where an officer really tries to understand the situation and de-escalates the situation and uses only force that's required. You know, we're seeing the whole country has observed horrific incidences this past year and a half of our African-American brothers and sisters or our brothers and sisters who are black or brown just being treated by police as though they just had no dignity or no rights. And it was just very troubling. I mean, you have to ask yourself, you know, is racial biasing really systemic? And many, many, many lawmakers, myself included, do believe that unfortunately racial inequality is pretty prevalent throughout law enforcement. There are good cops, but we felt that laws were needed to ensure that the laws applied in a blind fashion, if you will. We prohibit shooting at motor vehicles. And then we also ask local police departments to collect data on stops that they make and the profile of the individual who is stopped. We're trying to get a handle on, you know, what kind of policing is actually going on? And we're going to tie some money, federal money that flows through the states that we give to law enforcement. We're going to tie that to the unit's ability to actually participate in this data collection. We've taken away a lot of motor vehicle violations that were a primary cause of action. So folks hopefully will not be stopped for not having a back license plate or not having, or having tinted windows or things like that. Where, you know, we're not allowing that to be a primary offense. And also the scent of marijuana in a car can't be a primary offense either. So we're hoping that again, we're taking a different approach to, we're hoping to facilitate a different approach to policing. In terms of the accountability and oversight, we're going to facilitate the creation of civilian review boards. We do understand that this is a concept the locality needs to embrace. And again, the state will provide some best practice information and give some tools to civilian review boards, like the ability to ask for a subpoena. They have to subpoena records. They would have to go to a judge to get that authority granted, but they would have the authority to go to a judge. So that's sort of the overview of the policing. I mean, one issue that was particularly, got a lot of attention was removing the minimum felony sentence for an assault of a police officer. Currently on our books, if the police officer feels in any fashion that he has been assaulted and assaulted is, under the law is defined fairly loosely, a touch, a spit, or something like that. It's an automatic felony charge. So we removed that minimum six-month felony charge. And the felony charge can still be applied. It's just there's an option now to go to a jury. Because we found there are situations where offenders may have diminished culpability. That's frequently related to maybe diminished intellectual capacity, diminished emotional capacity, lack of situational intelligence. And they may not have meant to push an officer back. An individual may have been, you know, on autism scale and needed some space or whatever. And out of fairness, should that individual really be slapped with a felony? So I've spent a lot of time explaining that. And I'm proud to say that most people come down on the side that we really do want fairness. There are mitigating circumstances and we shouldn't apply a minimum felony charge automatically across the board in every single case. So there we are. I could continue. I'm sorry, I can always take too long. These have been very complex issues and we've had lots of stakeholders, including our law enforcement, at the table. Not everybody's happy, but we think we've carved a compromise where most stakeholders believe we're probably in the right place.
Thank you, Senator Favola. That all sounds like really great stuff. Delegate Subernanen, can you sort of respond to the criminal justice reform going on in the House of Delegates?
Absolutely. And first of all, thank you to Senator Favola. She's actually the sponsor of that big bill. You know, it's her baby. And she's, it's just been amazing to see that. One of the things that's frustrated me in my very young career is that the House and Senate don't seem to be able to have the stars aligned when it comes to criminal justice. I thought it was actually the House that kind of dropped the ball and earlier this year during regular session. I thought we could have done a lot more on criminal justice and we actually didn't pass a lot of good bills the Senate sent our way. And what I was told was that it was the opposite before. And now I think in this moment, we're finally aligning on a lot of our goals, which is so amazing. And I would say one of the things, Senator Favola, what I love about the omnibus bill on Senate side and what we're doing on the House side is it's not about punishing police. It's not about even taking away their ability to fight crime and prevent crime. It's really just this idea that, you know, police, there are some, police are in a position of power. And there are few, but enough, police and law enforcement who have taken advantage of that power in ways that really there's no recourse. And then a lot of these boards and commissions and a lot of these oversight entities have been dominated by other law enforcement that want to look out for themselves and look out for their own. And so it's been the fox guarding the hen house for a long time. And just like every single other entity, you know, out there, every single sector, you want accountability for people who are in that sort of position of power. That's what we're trying to get at. We're not trying to punish anyone or, you know, take away from the work the police are doing. And then the second thing is criminal justice. We are one of the worst states. I mean, when it comes to criminal justice, I think, you know, we, the number of people we incarcerate, number of people that are in prison for, I tried to do bail reform this past session. I'm going to bring that bill back next session. Just so many, so much to deal with that. Even with the amazing amount of things we're going to be doing this special session, this is only just the beginning. But our criminal justice system in Virginia, really, you know, a lot of these laws date back to Jim Crow. They are really, you know, not friendly to people of color. You'll see, you see in Virginia, the statistics, people of color incarcerated at a very high rate. And I think, you know, this is going to be a really great step in the right direction.
I agree. There's a question about what I think will actually pass. And I do think much of what I just described will pass. The House has complimentary bills to the large bill I described. And there aren't a lot of differences on key points, you know, especially where it comes to accountability and transparency and better police training and de-escalation. And, you know, a lot of the common sense issues I talked about, like no chokeholds and all that. There's a lot of agreement. So, and we have been working with the administration, Governor Northam and his people. So I'm thinking that a lot of this will pass. And let's just be clear. I mean, there are a lot of very good police officers and the police association doesn't want bad cops protected either. They want standards and they want better training. And they are embracing this crisis intervention model. So I'm hopeful.
And one last question for the two of you before we move on to the Electoral Board.
Okay.
What is going on with qualified immunity?
Do you want me to go first, Suhas?
Go for it. Are you talking about what happened with the House vote? Is that what you're getting at?
In the Senate vote, in the Senate.
I don't know what happened. If you want to explain the Senate, I'll explain the House.
I'll get you off the hook, Suhas. Qualified immunity is a very complex, it's a very complex topic. It's not an easy topic. You know, police officers are making split decisions. Their life and death decisions, they are putting themselves at risk oftentimes. And they're intervening in situations that are very emotional and can be very dangerous. So, and we acknowledge that. That's a very different type of work than anybody else does. Should there be some immunity? I think some folks would argue in certain cases, yes, there should be some immunity. Should it be a blanket immunity? I think most folks would say, no, there shouldn't be blanket immunity. Everybody should be held accountable in some way, especially when you're responsible for applying our constitution. Where you're actually, you're the person that's going to ensure somebody's constitutional rights are honored in a very heated moment. And you also have the authority to carry a gun. So the Senate decided to take the House bill with all due respect. And we put it into a study. The Judiciary Committee established a subcommittee, if you will, tasked it with actually evaluating qualified immunity. We just weren't ready to act on it yet. So that's where it is. So there will not be a qualified immunity bill coming out of special session because of the actions the Senate took.
Yeah, I mean, on the House side, you know, even the bill we passed, I think I went through a few changes before it got passed and it passed by one vote. Actually, it didn't pass the first time. And then we got a few Democrats kind of changed their vote so they passed the second time. And so that just kind of shows you that at least the vote count on qualified immunity is pretty tough in the House and the Senate. And it's not going to be something easy. And really, usually when you have a bill, you know, that's somewhat controversial, the patron will do whatever they need to do to get it passed. But in this case, you know, Delegate Jeff Bourne out of Richmond, you know, he is very passionate about this right now and I totally commend him. I was a co-patron of this bill. And, you know, he told us that he did not want to move very much. He did not want to compromise very much on this. He had his bill and he wanted to stick with it. And I totally respect that. So I completely understand that. And I think that, you know, as a result, you know, may not have gotten to the finish line in special session. But, you know, in a couple of months, we're going to be in regular session before you know it. And I think it'll have a good chance of passing then after we've had a chance to to take a look at the impact it might have.
Yeah. I just want to say, I do agree, Suhas. I do think that in the full session where we can have a more complete airing of the bill, we will get something passed. And I want to say that localities need to be part of this conversation. Because if qualified immunity is removed in some fashion, which I expect it will be, I don't think it'll be a blanket removal. But if it's removed in some fashion, local governments, I believe, will then be also liable for the actions of their employees, police officers. And they could be subject to lawsuits. So I'd be very interested in hearing what local governments think about this bill as well. And they haven't had much time to look at the House version. So now they don't have to because House version is being evaluated in a study in the Senate. So there you go.
Thank you guys so much. So we're going to move on because we all know we've got an election coming up. Probably the most important election of our lifetime. And one of the big things that did come out of special session was drop boxes. Ellen, can you tell us a little bit from the Electoral Board about the drop boxes? How they work? How are they secure? What's going to happen with those?
I can do that. First thing, we have 14 drop boxes that we had ordered before the General Assembly approved them, just in case, because they're all backed up. So we have 14 that are going to arrive first. And those drop boxes, what are they going to look like? They are similar to a bank deposit drop box. They are designed only for an envelope. It is a one-way slot. They are secure and have been used successfully in other states, most recently in the state of Maryland. Where will they be? Before the election? They will be at Loudoun County Public Libraries in the lobby. Now, there's a, what we're going to do is we're going to swear in a person that works, already works at the library to be a temporary election official. They stand in the lobby next to the drop box. And they will, so the drop box will be watched at all times. There's someone there right now that lets, controls the crowd going into the library. So there's someone there already. So we're just adding to their job. Okay, the libraries, they're going to be at the nine libraries. Ashburn, Brambleton, Cascades, Gum Springs, Lovitzville, Middleburg, Percival, Russ Library in Leesburg, and Sterling. The library hours are great. The library hours are Monday through Thursday, 10 to 8, and Friday and Saturday, 10 to 5. So those boxes will be there. They'll be at the satellite locations and Miller Drive. We're probably going to have two of them. The boxes will be staffed at all times. A team of two will be sent to each location daily to collect the ballots. Ballots will be removed from the drop box and placed in a secure container. A form will be provided for them to sign, date, and record the number of ballots placed in the container. The container will be transported back to the office. Then the absentee coordinator will open the container and verify that the number of ballots recorded is correct. We're very careful in Loudoun. We double-check everything. The ballots shall then be processed. They are then placed under lock and key in our ballot room. After the election, the clerk of the circuit court gets the ballots.
Great, that's a lot of detailed information. And for everybody on this call, we will be sending out, excuse me, the names of those libraries that Ellen just named off. So if you didn't write them down real quick, don't worry. We'll make sure that everybody has that information.
Okay, there's one thing I want to add, which Bob and I were talking about when we were on. We will let you know when we receive those drop boxes. Those drop boxes are going to come later than September 18th, okay? So we don't want anyone to go to the library until we tell them that the drop boxes are there.
Do you have an ETA of when the drop boxes may arrive?
They're saying the end of September. Now, the exception to that will be Miller Drive. We're going to have drop box, two drop boxes at Miller Drive, but they're not the official drop boxes that I've been talking about. We have a ballot bot, you know, we have boxes that we're going to use for the time being, also with someone there at all times.
Great, thank you, Ellen. This question is for you. Social distancing and everything with COVID right now is a big, big thing, right? You know, we got to make sure we're standing six feet apart. We got to make sure that people have masks. On Election Day, how is the Board of Elections planned to handle that at the polls?
So first thing we have to understand is we've already received 51,000 applications for mail ballots. So that's going to reduce, if that continues, we could have 100,000 people apply and vote by mail. That will reduce the number of people that are voting on Election Day. So we've planned and we've streamlined some of the process, the drop boxes. Thank you, Assembly and Senate, for approving drop boxes because that will help us in the process. One of the slowest things that was happening in the election cycle was when somebody walked in with an absentee ballot and then had to, we had to spoil the ballot and issue another ballot. Because in our entire process, we make sure that you can only vote once. You could have 20 ballots in your hand. You're only going to vote once. The machine will only record it. We will mark it down and we will only accept one vote. If you try any other way, also a felony. But you cannot vote multiple ways. So on Election Day, we have, the first thing is we have additional help. We have at least two medical reserve people at every precinct. And we have, we're planning on, masks are required. There's going to be six feet between people. We're going to use lines and we're going to use every tool that we have. We're going to have volunteers, kids that are getting school credit, helping us with line management. And we plan on moving this along a lot faster. We've worked on our processes. We've trained people. And we're continually upgrading this because we don't want to have anybody discouraged. You're going to see on TV, some states have two, three, four hours. I'm more concerned that we have a two, three, or four-minute line. I think we've done everything that we could do. We have great partners in this. The county's been phenomenal. So everywhere that we've asked, we've gotten. And I think we're ready for it.
That's really great to hear, really great to hear. Ellen, I'm going to go back to you for a minute. So there have been some questions that have come up in the Q and A about the ballots. One of them being, will the absentee ballots be counted before Election Day?
Yes. Okay.
Can you guys talk a little bit, please?
Yes. Upon receipt, at the, okay. What I want to do is tell you what happens to your ballot once it leaves the voter's hands. Upon receipt at the Office of Elections, the ballot envelopes are checked by hand for irregularities. If there are problems, the voter is contacted within three days of receipt to make the necessary corrections. Thank you again to Barbara Favola and Suhas. If there is no problem, the ballot is opened, marked in the poll book, and the ballot is run through the voting machine, but no results are tabulated until after 7:00 PM on Election Day. Okay, does that answer?
There is no way that we could process 50,000 votes that fast. So we do have to run them through the machine. But there is no tape that is ever recorded or printed. We don't know any results. Everything is closed and sealed.
Yep, till we push the button.
Okay.
Okay.
Here is a question for all of you. So there have been a lot of rumors going around about armed protesters at voting locations. Is this something that anybody is expecting in Loudoun County? It's been, you know, all over the news about all these threats and everything out there. If it is something that's expected in Loudoun County, what are the safety measures that are in place to ensure that voters are not intimidated? And I guess I will start with Bob.
Okay, I'll start this one. So we've had one gun incident in the 20 years that I've been involved. That was regrettably on a property that allowed a gun. Most of our voting locations are at schools. It is not allowed to have a gun on the property. That is the rules and police will be called automatically on that. So if a voter feels intimidated, we have, we've been working with the Loudoun County sheriffs. Loudoun County sheriffs are on call. They will routinely be passing by the polling locations and checking in. We don't want them hovering at the locations, but they are on call. We have a network of troubleshooters and a process for reporting any of these incidents. And they move up the chain very quickly.
Thank you, Bob. Ellen, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, we also meet with Chief Brown in Leesburg, who is excellent. And they are also on call. They roam around and they're ready. I really don't think we're going to have anything like that happen, hopefully.
Delegate Subernanen, I can never pronounce your name and your last name properly.
It's like Superman.
Always call you Delegate.
Yeah, so Delegate Superman, yeah. So do not let people intimidate you from voting or anyone from voting. Again, this goes back to Jim Crow era, trying to, you know, intimidate certain voters from making their voice heard. Do not let that happen. Libraries are a safe place to vote. These are all county, on county property. And so there should not be any issues with that, even if they have a gun. Like it's, you know, there's going to be, these are safe spaces. And so don't let that prevent you from voting. If you prefer to vote absentee for health reasons or any other reason, you prefer to vote by mail, then, you know, by all means. And if someone is worried, just know that this is historic in the sense that there are so many ways for you to vote without any excuse that there's no excuse anymore to not vote. So that should be the message that we as Democrats get across everyone is you have so many ways to vote that you have no more excuses to do anything but vote. So, but please don't let anyone be intimidated.
Thank you. Senator Favola?
I think my colleague Suhas said it eloquently and right on the mark. We do have lots of options this year and because this is an historic election and we are in the midst of a pandemic. One thing folks probably don't know is by law, every precinct will have to be open Election Day. Unless the registrar gets special permission to maybe combine a precinct or two into one site. But otherwise, without that special permission, every site will be open Election Day. And if I heard Ellen correctly, she mentioned many, many places will have the drop box option. And in the appropriation language, it actually directs the registrar to come up with a process for ensuring the custody and security of that ballot when the drop box is used. So don't let people tell you that, you know, somehow there's an opportunity for fraudulent voting. Fraudulent voting is just not an issue. And please, please, it's just not an issue. You know, the Brennan Center on Justice said there's a .00003 chance that somebody would fraudulently cast a ballot. It is simply not, you know, that's not a problem.
Thank you. And this is.
Sorry, sorry. But one other thing is I'm going to put in the Zoom, there's a link on the Virginia website for absentee ballots. This year, you can actually track. If you're worried about, one of those people who are worried about if something gets lost in the mail, you can track it now. And so they'll tell you the status of where it is. Has it been sent to you yet? Have you received it yet? Have they gotten it back from you? So don't worry if this is your first time mailing in a ballot. You're like me and you love going in person and on Election Day and this year, you don't feel comfortable doing that. You know, there's a process in place to track your ballot.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful information.
Yeah. And I will just say, you know, October. And I will just say, you know, October, I'm sorry, September 18th starts in-person. No excuse, early voting. And it ends October 31st. So you could go to your registrar's page and find out where the sites are and the hours. And also, if you've requested an absentee ballot, and when it arrives and you fill it out, if you're concerned about using the postal service, you can bring that ballot with you to the registrar. Am I correct, Ellen? And at the time that in-person absentee opportunity exists, bring your ballot. They will have the tracking number there, so they can rip up your ballot and allow you to vote in person. Or what, so if you're worried that your ballot would not get through the postal service in a timely fashion.
I think this is a good time to go through some of the key dates that we have here. The first one is, as you said, Barbara, early voting starts September 18th. That's a Friday. We're also starting to mail out the mail ballots on that Friday. We should have all of those 50,000 out within three business days. So people are going to start to receive them about September 21st. And they should all receive them. Anybody that has their mail ballot in should receive them no later than one week after that. And again, you can track your ballot and you can contact us after that point. Online voter registration and in-person voter registration deadline is October 13th. So registration last day is Tuesday, October 13th. Early voting is going to begin Saturday, October 17th in our three satellite offices, Sterling, Percival, and Dulles South. We're also, the last day to request a ballot by mail is Friday, October 23rd. And then the last day of early voting is Saturday, October 31st. So a couple of the key days to talk about.
Could you put, I'm sorry, Bob or Lisa, whoever, could you do a slide with those dates?
Yeah, what we are going to do, we're going to have an FAQ page up on our website so that you can find all of this information just in one easy spot on our website. It will have the dates on there and it will have a lot of the key points that we discussed today.
It's very important, when you make a plan to vote, that you stick to your plan. It does create some confusion if you try to vary from that.
We had...
A good point, Bob. Talking about making a plan to vote, I think that especially this year, it's one of the most important years to make sure that you have a plan to vote. With that being said, we talked about how, you know, when you show up, you've got to show up, you know, with your ballot. Is there any other sort of little things like that, that people need to be aware of?
I want to stress the fact that we have taken every precaution that we possibly can to make voting safe for people to vote in person. You know, we have a separate on Miller Drive, we have a different office that they're going to use, where everything can be spread out. And, you know, all the PPE and all that, we're requiring them to wear, all our election workers have to wear masks, and we're requiring the people that come in there to wear a mask. So if you think like, I have just got to vote in person, don't worry about it. I mean, I think you'll be fine. You also have the curbside option. You know, they can do that too, if they're worried. And they can curbside with their ballot filled out if they want. But...
This is, just a comment here. If you are going to mail back your ballot, put it in the mail two weeks before the election. I mean, you just can't trust the postal service to get your ballot there on time. And by law, it has to be received by noon on the Friday following the election. It has to be postmarked on Election Day, but you can be received by the Friday at noon after the election. I wouldn't, you know, put it in the mail two weeks before. So that's just really important if you're talking about making a plan.
I'll go better than that. Ballot, fill it out, and mail it, if that's what you're planning on doing.
Right.
Get it, mail it.
So speaking on that point, and this is the last prepared question that I have, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tyler so he can read off some of the questions that have been said in the Q and A. But speaking on this influx of mail-ins, now, this is the big money question, and I know nobody has an exact answer here.
When are we going to get results?
Exactly. When are we going to have an answer?
So most of the ballots are going to be counted exactly the same way. We are going to put preliminary results up immediately. You're going to get those, again, Loudoun County posts its results sometimes 20 minutes after the polls close. They are unofficial results, but on some of the locations. The big brunt, the central absentee precinct, will stop counting at 7 o'clock on Election Day and post those results. Now, ballots received from that point on until Friday at noon will be counted in a separate central absentee ballot, and we will update those on Friday. There is a possibility that we don't see final results until late on that Friday or Monday. It matters if we have a contested election and that could go on. How long did Florida go in 2000?
Forever.
But if everything goes the way it's planned, you're going to see most results Tuesday night.
And not immediately, please, not immediately.
On our local webpage, you'll see some things. But you will get a very good idea on Tuesday what it's going to be, and you're going to see an update on Friday. That's when we go through the provisional ballots and you'll see some adjustments. There's always some adjustments. So we're prepared like normal. It's just there's going to be a little adjustment on Friday.
Okay. Delegate Subramaniam, did I get it right?
Yes.
What is your estimate? Let's hear your thoughts on this. When do you think we'll have some results here in Virginia?
It's not going to matter because we'll have so many Democratic voters voting that we're going to know that Trump lost, like, the second ballot's already counted. So it's not even going to matter. And while I have the floor, I'm also going to answer a question that I'm asking myself, which a lot of people have asked me, which is, what is the best way to vote? And the answer is whatever way gets you to vote. I would, though, recommend just request the ballot. It's not that hard. You can go online, then email that link to all your friends. Instead of canvassing door to door, you can just email to everyone. Just get people to request ballots, because when they get it, you know, they'll know what to do with it if they don't mail it in. Worst case, worst case scenario, they can just go on Election Day and vote. But I would highly recommend people just go online, request the ballot. Second you get it, just put it in a Dropbox or put it in the mail. Very easy.
Okay, Senator Favola, you're up. What is your thoughts?
You gave a great answer, Su Haas, it's a great answer. I think he's right. I think we're going to get enough preliminary information by Election Night that Virginia will go in the blue column. And our electoral votes will be going for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. So I don't know when the election will actually be concluded around the country. That I don't know. More states than ever are doing the mail-in, are really pushing mail-in voting and Dropbox options. So it'll be very interesting. I am very excited that, I think some of what we're doing this election will last in the future and will be enabling people to vote, you know, perhaps people who haven't voted before. So I think that we're really, you know, sowing the seeds for a stronger democracy by having so many voting options. That's how hopeful I am. I do have to hop off at 8 o'clock, but if you have a question that you would like me to respond to, I'd be happy to. You are in such good hands. I mean, there's really nothing I can add, given your registrar and Bob Moses and Su Haas. You all have it covered, so.
Well, thank you, Senator Favola, so much for your time.
Thank you. You guys rock. Thank you so very, very much. I'm going to leave you. Good luck. If you need anything, just give me a holler.
And one last thing, one last plug before we move on to the Q and As that have been typed. And as everybody in Loudoun knows, we do have a town council and mayor race in Leesburg this year as well. And on Saturday, the 19th, we are doing a rally for civility over at the Ion Center. It will be socially distanced. We will have some special speakers show up there. We're going to be doing no-contact canvassing for our Leesburg candidates, and we will also be offering rides to the polls. So we will be sending that flyer out tonight. If that's something you're interested in, you know, you want to show up and get a ride to the poll, hear some awesome speakers, maybe even, you know, drop off some literature at some doors, you know, please, please make sure to look out for that. And without further ado, the wonderful Tyler is going to take the rapid-fire portion of this.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to all of our speakers for taking the time tonight. I'm going to kind of bounce around what has been in the question and answer portion, and then I'll get to the chat. But Ellen, I did see you wanted to answer a question live, so I'll read the question out loud and then you can answer. The question is, curbside is available to anyone, correct? Not a certain demographic or anyone that is not able-bodied. It's open to everyone.
Anyone. Yes, that's correct. They can use it to...
All right.
They can vote in their car, they can hand over a ballot that's already filled out.
That's available too at Miller Drive.
Yes, Miller Drive and at the polling places.
Awesome. Thank you so much. This question will be for Delegate Subramaniam. Somebody asked, we still have a third of COVID cases without any race information. How can we improve that, considering how critical that data is?
I believe we passed a bill in the General Assembly, I need to double-check on that, that requires that. But I'll need to double-check, but if we haven't, we should. And if that's not already in the works, which I believe, I was told it was, then I'm happy to write a letter to make sure it happens because that absolutely needs to be part of our reporting. Reporting as it is for COVID has been, you know, not the best. And that's excluding the fact that a lot of people don't want to report that they have COVID. And so I, you know, I think that's something that needs to be solved. So thanks for the question.
Awesome. Thank you, Delegate Subramaniam. This one will be for Bob and Ellen. Will there be a Dropbox at each location, or each precinct, rather? And if so, how will that work? I think you discussed how it will work, but if you could provide more insight on will there be one at each precinct?
There will not be like the drop boxes at the library, the big metal ones. They will be more portable. They will be manned. And they will be, depending on the poll location, the best we can do with not having them, they will not be in the polling voting area. They will be outside, in the doorway, in the hallway. But they won't be, so you'll be able to do it very quickly. Go, show your ballot. We will have a person identified as being the person to handle these votes. They will be wearing a vest or have a badge or something. We haven't made that determination yet, how. We're thinking of some sort of reflective vest saying drop-off person, something like that.
And a sign.
We're working out the details. But they will not be by the machine. You will not have to get in line to register. You'll be able to walk up, put it in, and walk out. But then they will be manned the entire time.
And I want to point out that they are very different. They're a bag with a lock on it. So they are different.
We couldn't afford 100 additional, very expensive drop boxes.
To use one time.
Yes.
The 14, we can probably reuse, but to get 100 more, we wouldn't have gotten them in time. We're not getting the 14 till the end of September. So we probably wouldn't have gotten them.
Yeah, most municipalities are not going to be able to get the boxes that we ordered in anticipation of this.
Gotcha. Understood. Appreciate that. This question comes from the chat, but I believe it could possibly go to all of our panelists, so I'm going to open it up for discussion. Somebody asked, is there a graphic that we can share on social media that's kind of like a one-stop shop where we can get all of this new voting information out in a quick, accessible way?
Well, I think that's what that fact sheet is going to be, that Lisa was, is Lisa still on?
I am. So the FAQ sheet is just going to be like a portion of the LCDC website. But Tyler, we should definitely put this into a social media graphic and blast it out on social media and to all of the different groups and make it easily shareable. I do know there's somebody named Kristen Swanson who's really good at making that sort of stuff. I don't know if she is on this evening, and if she is, I'm sorry, I literally just called you out, but you are amazing with this. So I will be calling you.
Also, the Office of Elections will be doing a mailing to every household, not to individual voters, on a lot of the changes that are coming up in how to vote. The Office of Elections has a presence on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We are also using the county Blast Text system and the regular county emails. And our registrar has been doing a publicity tour all over the place. So we're really trying to get the word out.
Understood. Appreciate it. Anything from the Commonwealth Delegate Subramaniam that you can think of, or will this kind of be left to the localities to push out?
Yeah, I think I just posted a link on the Zoom chat. It's a pretty good graphic and has all the links as well, since it's the VDH website, Department of Elections website. So, you know, if you want to request a ballot, you got to do so about October 13th, and there's the button to request a ballot. So it's, they've made it pretty easy for you. And then there's FAQ on the bottom as well, if you have any questions.
Awesome. Thank you. I did just see that. Sorry, put me on the spot like that when you're already answered. All right, we got a couple more questions in the chat. One's a really good one, because I know this is something that was important to my parents growing up. During early voting and voting on Election Day, on the 3rd, will children be allowed to accompany their parents into vote with these new social distancing guidelines in place? I'm sorry, what was that, Ellen?
We're both looking at each other for the...
Yeah, because we're kind of, I mean, we've never turned children, children always vote with their parents.
Yeah. We even have these young, future voter stickers that we give to children. I would think that the kids will be with their parents in that same six-foot circle as their parents.
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds good. All right, we have one more question specific to, or actually two more. So I'm going to give you guys, Bob and Ellen, two more questions, and then I will end with a question for Delegate Subramaniam. The first question is, if anyone... The first question is, if anyone shows up with a gun, obviously, the context is a conversation we were talking about earlier with armed intimidators. What should a voter do? Do they tell an election official? Do they call the police non-emergency number? What's the best course of action?
Go for it, Bob. You brought it up.
All of the above. If you feel intimidated and you feel the safest way for you to get the information out, do what you feel best. If you want to call the police 911 number, the non-emergency number, contact an individual or anyone that's on the outside that's from, I'm sure we have a very good system in the Democratic Party with the people out there to get the word out very quickly. Please, no one should feel intimidated, and those guns are not allowed on government property. So I really don't think it's going to be a problem. In all the years that Ellen and I have been doing this, we've seen it once. I think you should worry about the, right now, the biggest problem is disinformation. There's way too.
Anything you'd like to add, Ellen?
Yeah, our election officers are trained for situations like that. So I would suggest that if someone sees someone with a gun, let the election officer inside, the chief, know. We have a whole chapter on how to handle that when we teach them. So, and, you know, some people just do it because they think it's cool. You know, and they wear it on their hips so you can see it. And, but, like we said, they're not allowed to have a gun in school anyway.
Understood. Appreciate it. One last question for our amazing election officials, and then you guys are off the hook for the rest of the night. Somebody asked, are we getting enough officers to work the election this year?
We have, yes, we do. In fact, we have, how many do we have now? 850, Bob?
We have 850 signed up.
Signed up.
And we still have a number of them that are being contacted.
Yeah, and then we have 500 on a waiting list that we can turn to if we need them. We've stopped, we're not taking any more names for working elections.
And we have a second backup plan and a third backup plan for workers. The county, it is a county holiday. It's a state holiday. So we have in reserve, the entire county corps is ready to assist. And we have teachers that signed up and helped us during the Republican primary. So we have a pool in case there's another outbreak or, and pool and a plan.
Yeah, we're feeling pretty good about, I think we have, we're right where we want to be.
Other municipalities have asked us if they have extra, do we need them? So the local municipalities, different counties, are talking within each other to make sure there's a balance also, to help each other out.
Sounds good. I see somebody did raise their hand. Jackie, if you could please type your message or use the Q and A feature, I will promise to have your question answered. I'm going to pass it off to Delegate Subramaniam for the last question in the Q and A feature. Somebody asked, while much of the criminal justice reform sounds promising, they just want to make sure that we're putting our police officers in a place to where we're not necessarily being punitive for them making a tough decision on their job. I know you and Senator Favola touched on this earlier. Could you just go over some of those protections that are in place? And what some of those changes are that, you know, create those standards you were talking about, but also protect police officers to act in those quick situations?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, just like, I mean, somehow this has become a partisan thing. So, you know, because of that, you know, the Republican playbook is always to exaggerate what's happening, exaggerate all the things Democrats are doing. So like on guns, we're trying to go in and take away every one of your guns and ban them and this and that. So it's the same thing on this issue, just like every other issue. So, you know, the message is we're trying to punish police officers for doing their job, and that's clearly not the case. You know, every single bill, do you actually read it? If you actually look through it like I do and like other legislators do, you'll see that there are, not a lot is changing in terms of, you know, being able to do the job. What's changing is the accountability part. If an officer really messes up or is a bad actor to begin with and does the wrong thing, no longer are they protected by their buddies. They have to respond to the community as a whole. And the community as a whole, through either a community board or through some other provision of law or the court system will hold them accountable. And, you know, if they did the right thing, they did the right thing. I'm a volunteer firefighter. We have to do the same thing. We have to make snap decisions. And we get yelled at later on sometimes. But, you know, in the end, people understand that we're just trying to do the right thing. It's the same way for law enforcement. They make snap decisions, and we understand that. What we can have happen is when they make clearly the wrong decision, they get to cover it up or they get their buddies to protect them because there's no accountability in place. That's what we did. So don't let anyone tell you that. We took away the police ability to, you know, sheriff offices' ability to protect our Commonwealth.
Thank you, Delegate Subramaniam. We just got one more. I'm waiting for Jackie. Jackie Halpern, I saw you had your hand up. If you could get your question into the chat in the next minute or two, I would appreciate it. We did get one last question that I think is reasonable for Bob and Ellen to perhaps address. And with people volunteering this year, somebody asked, should students volunteer at voting places this year? And if that is something that's being implemented, should they be accompanied by adults?
Can you repeat that again?
Sure. It is, you know, there seems to be a surplus of volunteers or election officers. The question is, should students still be volunteering at voting places? And if so, with everything going on, should they be accompanied by adults?
Ellen, I think that's the PAGE program.
Yeah, the PAGE program. Yeah, we take all teenagers and their pages.
The PAGE program is a very important program. It develops people to understand the process and get young people in the process. We would love to have, continue to have the Pages and there. They don't need to be accompanied by adults that are under supervision and a structured program for them.
And it looks good on their resumes, especially the high school. But it's 14 to 17 for the Pages.
Gotcha. Sounds good. That is all of the questions I have for you all. So thank you so much for letting us put you on the spot with some questions. And I will turn it back to our chair, Lisa.
So that's all we got this evening. Thank you, guys, so very much for, you know, hanging out with us this evening and, you know, listening to us and letting us sort of pick your brains on some things and get your level of expertise. Closing statements. Ellen and Bob, do you have a closing statement?
Just get out and vote. Everybody vote, no matter what way. Have a plan.
Yes, absolutely. Make a plan, stick to that plan.
Delegate Subramaniam.
Yeah, I know, vote and understand that there's a lot of precautions in place to make sure that, you know, if you do end up going in person early or on Election Day, as, you know, Bob and Ellen have said, like, don't be afraid to do that if that's what you have to do. I'm part of a lot of medical reserve corps, and we have so many volunteers as well. We don't, you know, it's hard to even get a slot for me to volunteer right now with them. So like, there's so much in place right now to be able to help make it a safe experience. And we got to get Trump out of office, please. Please go out and vote.
Yes, yay!
Okay, everybody, you heard it here. Make sure to vote. Make a plan to vote, and we are safe in Loudoun County. Thank you, everybody, so very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.